KJZ FM and HD1 Long Beach, Los Angeles. This is KJazz 88.1, a service of California State University, Long Beach.
KJazz 88.1, Steve Tyrell with you from now until nine o'clock when it's Bubba Jackson after me. But we're gonna start this Tuesday, seven o'clock hour off with a song that from my Sammy Conn album. Their album's called It's Magic, the song for Sammy Conn, and this is a magical song and a great arrangement by my man Alan Broadbent. This is my version of the Sammy Conn Julie Stein "Teach Me Tonight."
Hello, and welcome to the City of Seal Beach Planning Commission Meeting, January 19th, 2016. The meeting will come tomorrow. And Commissioner Campbell will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as all.
By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any changes?
I think you're supposed to take roll call first.
Oh, thank you. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lauchan?
Here.
Chair Cummings. Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Klinger?
Here.
Chair Cummings is absent this evening.
Thank you. And now, by motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any changes?
Vice Chair Lauchan, I would like to read into the record that we received information and one change. For item number one, the Planning Commission minutes of December 7th, 2015, there's a correction to the paragraph number two. The ending sentence now reads, "There were no further speakers." Also, with respect to item number two, on January 15th, 2016, we received a letter from J.R. Watson and Associate Development Corporation that was distributed to the Planning Commission and made available to the public today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
I second. Please vote.
He's gonna have one blank because Esther is in here.
All right, we have four yays and one absent. So the motion passes. That's right. All right.
So it's going this, it's going from there.
We were trying to figure out which way it was going.
We're really on it.
Okay, we'll do better now. All right, now it's time for oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Is anyone here for oral communications or would like to address us? Okay. Oral communications is now open?
Well, you can say no one is here.
So it's now closed?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so to the consent calendar. Approval of Planning Commission meeting minutes from December 7th, 2015 and January 4th, 2016. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes?
Only the one correction noted previously?
Okay. All right.
Do we already approve those?
Yeah, we kind of approved them.
We approved both, we just want, I don't know if we did one.
I believe the last motion was to approve the, um, to approve the agenda, and you noted the corrections as well, so I would defer to the Assistant City Attorney, but I believe a motion is required here.
So.
Move to approve both, uh, both notes.
And I must remember that the minutes are to be approved as corrected.
Yes.
As corrected.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, and it has been seconded that we approve the minutes for both the December 7th and January 4th meetings with corrections. Please vote. We have four yays and one absent. Motion passes. Okay, now is the time for our public hearings. And first item is conditional use permit 15-9. Is there a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. Tonight I'll be presenting item number two, which is located at 550 Pacific Coast Highway, units 111 and 109 for conditional use permit 15-9 to allow the expansion of an existing restaurant with a type 47 distilled spirits alcohol license into an adjacent space. The existing use operates under two conditional use permits currently, CUP 91-6 for the type 47 alcohol license and CUP 95-3. They had modified some hours of operation in the past. The Yucatan restaurant has been at this site since 2005 when it moved there from the shops at Rossmore. The site is located here in this yellow square, which is north of Marina Drive, southwest of Pacific Coast Highway in the Bay City Center. The applicant is requesting to expand his current 1,957 square foot Yucatan restaurant into an adjacent space, which is 456 square feet. The expansion will not create more dining space. They will provide, it will provide ADA compliant restrooms, a lobby area, office, and some storage area. The main entrance for this restaurant is currently right here off of the parking lot area, and that will remain its main entrance. Right here we have an outdoor eating area that is relatively enclosed. The shades and there's windows here so that no one can come along here and reach in. The existing space where they're gonna be moving into is in this kind of blurred out space, which is currently, was currently a beauty salon, and that's located right here next door. The whole location will be on this first floor of this shopping center. As you can see, the current unit in 111 goes all the way back into this area. Mainly, most of this right in here is your dining area with your kitchen areas and an office space back here. And this is the adjoining unit in unit 109. The required parking for this expansion is met because with the new square footage of 2,413 square feet, when you add the two units together, currently with them independently, they have 26 parking spaces. But with the new square footage, which is only 2,413, it's only required to have 24 spaces, so they will have two extra spaces. The reason for the two extra spaces and the, um, with those square footages is because the previous one was a beauty salon and it had four beauty salon chairs, which equates to eight parking spaces instead of four, or five, as currently required. This application does not increase the number of ABC licenses in the area as it's currently an existing license. As you can see from these floor plans, this is the existing floor plan. This wall right here separates these two units. So right here's the beauty salon. We come over into here and this is the restaurant. These walls right here will be removed, which will create that lobby area. You will have a women's restroom over onto this side, a men's restroom over onto this side, an office here and some storage area here. This will encompass all of that new square footage for this particular space. The restaurant will operate as it is currently operating. This resolution actually will supersede the two previous conditional use permits, and all of the conditions of those previous resolutions have been incorporated into this resolution. Staff has received one letter of support that you have received up on the dius this evening. And staff recommends that Planning Commission adopt resolution number 16-2 approving CUP 15-9 with conditions. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions of staff?
I do. Okay, on page one of six of the resolution, the only reason I bring it up is it's a typo and it could end up in the permanent record. On section 3A, the subject site is within the Bay City Center located at the, on the, one of the two. South side of PCH. It's either located at the south side or on the south side. I would say on the south side should be correct.
On the south side.
Okay. Next question I have. If you go to page three of four with the background, on the one, two, three, fourth paragraph from the top, in the middle you have the hours of the restaurant, and it has stay open 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Friday. Okay, come over to the resolution on page two of six, or three of six, you have different hours.
That was what the, that's explaining what that resolution was for. The resolution 95-12 had modified those hours previously, and those were those modified hours.
So these are the old hours?
Those are the old hours, the new hours are on the other page. That's correct.
Okay, now, another question. You are requesting that they, so you're ABC licensed. They already have a license, and one of these changes impact the operation of the restaurant. So why do you wanna see, I mean, this is just all office stuff taken down a wall. Why do you wanna see their license all over again?
The licenses through ABC also take a look at any changes in the expansion of any type of floor area.
What's ABC? Why would you need to see it again?
We wanna make sure that they still have an ABC license.
Oh, okay. And that pretty much concludes the question, comments I had. Any other questions of staff by the commission?
With no further questions, the public hearing is now open. I see the applicants are here. Would you like to speak to the commission?
Good evening. Hi to the commissioner, commission, commissioners. And Steve, thank you. He did most of my work. He explained everything probably better than I could explain it. The only thing I wanted to add, first of all, my name is Felix Turey and my wife, Georgiana, owners for the last 17 years, 10 here and 7 at the Rossmore shops. We love this town, and fortunately, we've grown a bit. We like the customers, we love the customers we have. And mainly, our motivation for this expansion was to make it a more enjoyable dining experience for our customers. Our bathrooms are kind of small. The women's is always way too crowded because the women's have to, there's always a line and the men can go in and out. So our idea was to take the men's and women's, which is separate right there on the beginning top floor plan, and combine them so that we can have two stalls for the women and a double sink so that there won't be a line, hopefully. And then the men's will always be, you know, it's the one, uh, you're, no, you're no but the toilet and the sink. So we are thinking that it'll make it nicer for especially the wives, you know, when they come with the families, and it'll make it a nicer experience. The other thing is that in the front, when we saw the picture, it showed like a little curb, and then like tonight on a Taco Tuesday, we'll have people waiting outside. Normally, it's nice here in California, it's not a big deal, but with this El Nino thing going on, it's a little cold and rainy. So we're thinking that we could have those same seats, those two branches there with the people, kind of sitting there. And also, that front door is where all our deliveries come in, because that's pretty much our door. Now, my storage will be in the back, and my deliveries can come in right through that back door. And my office will be right there, and I can receive them and look to pay them as they come in. So that, those are our main motivations, to kind of make it just a nicer experience for everyone coming in. We don't really, we're really happy with the business that we have and the way the foundation is laid out and the seating, because we're kind of like a small family staff kind of restaurant, not corporate. My wife and I are there about 90% of the time. And currently, our office is like a tiny little closet. So now, since we're there 90% of the time, we'll have, the office is a lot, is down there, yeah, right there. It's actually a place where both of us can fit and stay husband and wife. So that, those three things, the customers, the deliveries, and getting our customers out of the cold, it's kind of like what we're looking at, and it just makes a lot more sense. It's like when you remodel a house, we're not trying to add a lot more stays. We're just trying to make it work a little nicer. And I think that'll do it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. If you could stay for just a moment, does the commission have any questions of the applicant?
No, I just wanted to comment that they had been up at the Rossmore Center, and when the Rossmore Center closed and was leveled, everyone had to leave. And some of the shops closed up, they were gone. Others tried to relocate to other areas and were not successful. You came down here to this area, and you've been here, and it's been great. So we're glad that you, this all worked out for you.
Love to hear that. Thank you.
For food.
Thank you.
Does anyone have questions of the applicant?
No, I love Yucatan. I love Yucatan.
Love to hear that. I, we can't say how much we love to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? All right, hearing none. The public hearing is closed. And any commission discussion?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, and it has been seconded to approve, wrong, the wrong one, resolution number 16-2 approving conditional use permit 15-9. Please vote. We have four yays, one absent. The motion passes. Congratulations. And Madam Chair, there is a 10-day appeal period. If anyone wishes to appeal, they have 10 days from tomorrow to appeal to City Council. Thank you. With that, let's move to item three, conditional use permit 15-10. Do you have a staff report for us?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is item three on the agenda tonight. It's at 12420, Unit A on Seal Beach Boulevard, conditional use permit 15-10 to allow the service of beer and wine, a type 41 alcohol license through ABC in conjunction with a restaurant in the general commercial zoning area. This restaurant is a new restaurant, and it's gonna go into the old Daphne's Greek Restaurant, which is located here on the east side of Seal Beach Boulevard, right as you come in the entrance, just across the street from the shops at Rossmore in the Old Ranch Town Center. The, um, the previous restaurant was a Greek cuisine, and this is gonna be a Mediterranean cuisine. They are actually owned by the same type of corporation. They just own different franchisees in there. The applicant is requesting a type 41 license to supplement his menu. The area is currently, right now, over-concentrated. It has three type 41s, two type 47s, for a total of five. And then it has also one for the Ayers Hotel, which is a special license, and then another one for the Old Ranch Country Club, which is a special license, but they are all onsite licenses. This one will make it six of our typical licenses, the type 41s and type 47s, which is what the actual concentration is, is six. But because the other two special ones are onsite licenses, it does over-concentrate it. There will be no increase in the size of the location, which is 1,830 square feet. They're doing a remodel. If any of you have been out there, kind of got it in there, they're just changing the decor and remodeling it for their branding type. There'll be 36 seats in the location, no consumption of alcohol on the outside. No increase in the parking demand as they were both restaurants previously. The dining area is located right in this particular area with the front entrance coming in through this portion here, with all this being area behind the counter where the alcohol will be stored and the back kitchen. The applicant has asked me that, he wants to change one of the conditions as per his hours of operation. If you look at resolution, at the resolution, page three, condition number five for the hours of operation, he's just asking that the hours of operation read, hours of operation shall be 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. He wants to change the one that was on Sunday at 8:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., just so it's consistent. Staff did not receive any correspondence for this item, and staff recommends approval of resolution 16-3 approving conditional use permit 15-10 with conditions and modifications. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff?
Okay, I have one comment, just one clarification. The shops at Rossmore is across the street from this center. It's a whole different ownership, whole different everything. It's not, this is not part of the shops at Rossmore. Okay, did Daphne's not have a liquor license?
No, they did not.
They did not? Okay. I have a question regarding, look at page three and page four of the resolution. Okay, item number eight says, "In the event staff determines security problems exist on the site, the conditions of this permit may be amended to require the provisions of additional security measures." Next page, number 17. "In the event staff determines that security problems exist on this site, the conditions of this permit may be amended under the procedures of the Seal Beach Municipal Code to require the provision of additional security measures." I think one of those needs to be taken out, because they're most of same.
Take out condition number eight for the vector, please.
That's it.
I have one question, Steve. You say it's over-concentrated by having another liquor license on site. How do we determine what over-concentrated means?
The Alcohol Beverage Control Board has a, it's by population per the census tract, and there's a certain number that they give you, a certain number of onsite and offsite licenses. In this particular area, with that population, they're allowed six on-sale licenses. So then we go through that census tract and we pull it up through the ABC database, and we look to see how many licenses are in that particular area.
Okay, so it's a regulator thing?
It's a regulator thing, and then they have a public convenience and necessity that they do with restaurants through ABC.
Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
What is the concentration of liquor licenses on Main Street? I mean, we're not talking about that. I would tell you this, 20 years ago, when I was here and somebody was applying for a license, they said, "You've got no liquor licenses on Main Street, and you have in Compton per square mile." And that's, I mean, area known to have a lot of liquor licenses. So it's, it's not quantity, it's quality. And this is a different tract that we're talking about.
Do you have any other questions of staff? Okay, seeing none. The public hearing is now open. Is the applicant present? Please state your name.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Mark Fernandez. I'm here representing Yala. Yala has gone through all the conditions and accepted all of them. The only thing was that modification Mr. Fowler had stated, which was just to modify that extended hour on Sundays. I'm not sure if that was our fault or if we filled out the application wrong, but we just wanted to make sure the hours are consistent, Monday through Sunday, 11 to 9:00 p.m. Any questions yet, I'm here to answer.
I came by today to take a look at it, and I came at a particular time when it was absolutely empty. Everything is out right now.
Yeah, we actually got our building permits, I believe, a couple of weeks ago, so we started a demo. As Mr. Fowler had mentioned, it's actually the same company that owns Daphne's, it's just a new concept that they're trying out, kebab kind of thing. So, it's a reason for that.
I did notice that there were no bars or like a fenced-in area or anything.
Yeah, there's no outdoor patio, it's all interior. Basically, out pretty much stays the same.
So there will be no outdoor seating at all?
No.
Okay, because Daphne's had some, I know.
Oh, didn't?
They had about three, in fact, they showed me where they had two tables on the side and three in front. So you won't have that?
No, it's only interior.
And certainly no alcohol?
Yeah, interior, yeah. Wine and beer.
One more question. This is going to be a Mediterranean restaurant. To me, that's Greek and Italian.
Yeah, it's, well, it is Mediterranean, but it's like kebabs, pitas, salads.
Wish you luck, because Daphne was Greek and they closed, and at the Boulevard in Los Alamos just closed, and you've got Santa Fe Italian porters right over there, so good luck.
Yeah, I think it's a lower price point this time and it's different style, so I think it's something they're trying out with their lower-performing Daphne's.
Is this a French one?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
No other questions? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? All right, seeing none, then public hearing is closed.
Move for approval.
Any discussion? Move for approval?
Move for approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. As revised, do we say as revised?
As revised.
So, yes.
All right. It has been moved and seconded that Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 16-3 approving conditional use permit 15-10 with revisions. Please vote. We have four yays, one absent, and congratulations, the motion passes.
Again, Madam Chair, there is a 10-day appeal period. If anyone wishes to appeal, their time starts tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, Item Number 4, Conditional Use Permit 15-11. Is there a staff report?
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair. This evening, the applicant actually is requesting to continue the item to the meeting of February 1st. She would like to make revision to the request, so the additional time will allow her that.
If you intend to do that, I would suggest a motion and a second to continue it to that date and time.
Yes, ma'am. I move that we continue to that, to the February 1st meeting. It has been moved and seconded that we continue the item to the meeting of February 1st, 2016. Please vote. We have four yays, one absent, and the motion to continue passes. Does this turn off, Stan? Do you have a director's report for us?
I do have something to share with you. It's an update in regards to the entertainment ordinance that you may recall several months ago, a couple of months ago. The Planning Commission reviewed the workshop relating to the entertainment permit ordinance, and one of the directions was to seek out the assistance of a noise consultant to help us in preparation of identifying a base level for noise and also a threshold level by distance. So staff, this afternoon, did meet with a noise consultant. The consultant is in the process of completing his scope of services, and we discussed having the monitoring system that will take place, and hopefully we can start with the action of the assistance from a noise consultant over in a couple of weeks. So I need to refine the scope of services, make sure it's on cue with what we've been asking for and what the residences are expecting, and get the contract executed, depending on the cost, and move forward. So we are moving in the direction, the consultant believes that, you know, he's familiar with the area, and they're willing to assist us, they think they can help us. They have some pretty good innovative ideas. They've done this in other jurisdictions as well, not just ours, so it's not something uncanny or uncommon, if you would say. So we are moving forward. It is, sometimes it takes a while for us to get exactly where we want to go. And that, that concludes my staff comments.
Last question. When are we looking at seeing the first, I mean, if it's going to happen, about the Planning Commission approving entertainment permits? About when would that happen? Do we have any idea? Do you have an estimate?
You know, I like to say hopefully in a couple of months. It depends on the results of the study. The Assistant City Intern and I, you know, we want to make sure that what we present to you and the consultant will present his report to you to give you an idea as to how we're going to incorporate our threshold limits. But when we do in a study, just as an example, and you're trying to monitor noise, you have to have a noise reader, if you will, or monitors stationed in various locations, targeted locations, and they have to get a base level of reading first in your community. So in order to establish how you, how we were able to legally create a threshold limit, we need to first establish what noise is out there. And that is not a noise that we can just do in a 20-minute increment, we need to do that probably over a week period of time, where we gather that average noise that we have in the different parts of the city, primarily in O-Town, because most of the cluster, if you will, of the commercial and restaurant area is in O-Town area. So a good reading and measurement of how we're going to structure any type of mitigation or development standards is primarily going to come from O-Town area. It's a good measuring tool and operation for us to conduct the threshold limits. So that could take probably, you know, once the reading comes in, to extrapolate the reading, sit down with staff, establish what we believe is reasonable and at what distance, how we will measure it, how we will actively enforce it, and how that'll be done is something that we need to refine before we bring you that finished product, so that you understand how we're going to incorporate into the ordinance, get your blessings on it. If you, if the commission is fine with it, we'll incorporate it into the draft ordinance, we bring that draft ordinance back to you, you bless it, then we move it on to City Council. We show the City Council as to what Planning Commission has asked for us to incorporate, which is sound, good judgment, and hopefully the City Council will sign up for it.
How does this impact Taco Surf?
I don't quite understand the question.
Well, they came to the city in May of 2014, and they couldn't get approval then for what they wanted, and so they were told the city was going to do an entertainment ordinance and it would take maybe a year, and it'll be two years this May, because they only had, they didn't have enough money to stay in business that long. And they came before the City Council with an attorney, and I'm just wondering, when is all this going to be accomplished so that Taco Surf can get some, do what they want to do?
Well, Taco Surf is doing what they are doing pursuant to what's legal in the municipal code. So they came before the Planning Commission, they got a conditional use permit to have entertainment. They have entertainment, but what they want to do is amplify it. Currently, the law says you cannot. It's unlawful. So we're doing our best to move forward pursuant to the directions of City Council.
Well, they do have some entertainment, it's just not amplified.
Yes, this commission approved that over a year ago. Yes.
Any other questions? Any commission concerns? Then we adjourn the Planning Commission to February 1st, 2016 at 7:00 p.m.
Yeah, I won't be here, I won't be here the next one.
The next one.